Our next speaker is a local community activist and candidate for city council and a fan of Metro Route 43. Please welcome Kishama Savant.
I'm a member of Socialist Alternative, which is a nationwide organization of activists fighting for social and economic justice. In addition to being a fan of Route 43, I'm also a fan of the Transit Riders Union. So let's have an applause for them. And I remember seeing many of you last at the funeral for the Right Free Zone last year. And I think we should remember that because we have to keep in mind that this recent logjam in Olympia over funding for such a basic service is only the most recent in a series of systematic cuts to social services and the social and economic infrastructure of this city and of this state and of this country. It's part of this process. And so let's not lose sight of the fact that our battle is not only going to be to find a source of funding for this recent round of cuts, but it has to be an all-out fight for our standards of living. This is what this is about. I would like to ask the politicians in Olympia and in this city, when you talk about the revenue crisis, what is this crisis you're talking about? Don't we have a situation where corporations are making record profits more than before the recession began? Don't we have the wealthy getting wealthier by the minute? So why do you have a crisis in revenues? I think the crisis in revenues is not a crisis in revenues, but it is a crisis in leadership. Yes, the Republicans are, you know, we are very clear which side they stand on. They do us that favor. They make it very clear they stand on the side of the wealthy, the minority elite, which gains from the system. Oh, yes. But the question that we have to ask is where is this leadership that is going to fight against that voice? Where is the voice in the city government and in the state government that will advocate for the interests of the rest of us? The rest of us, 99%. And if you have a revenue crisis, then why don't we have people there fighting to tax the wealthy? Why aren't we taxing the rich?
More than anything else, I think we should mention that this whole city council, you know, is populated by members who make nearly or even over $120,000 per year. Now you tell me, how can these people, in any honesty, represent ordinary working people while they're making such huge paychecks? And I pledge as a candidate to the city council that if I was elected a city council member, I will take home no more than the average worker's wage in Seattle and the rest we will collectively put into building mass movements. All the rest of the money will be used to build mass movements. Tell me, when was the last time you heard this from somebody running for city council? But it should also be pointed out that Conlon is not an exception to the rule. He is the rule. The mayor's office and the city council are both controlled by the Democratic Party establishment. And indeed, the city itself is controlled by the elite of the Democratic Party, who in turn are in the pockets of the downtown business association, the construction industry, and particularly Paul Allen's Vulcan, which is devouring real estate in this city while the rest of us are struggling with skyrocketing rents. And these politicians on the city council are practiced in the vile art of speaking somewhat progressive rhetoric while carrying out policies that benefit big business and the billionaires and the millionaires. And our campaign this year is going to be, in this political space, the only advocate for ordinary working people who are routinely shut out of the political dialogue in the city. The rich are getting richer, while the rest of us face skyrocketing rents. We're facing high taxes while big business is paying historically low taxes, and we're facing low wages and an overall rising cost of living.
Hi, welcome to All Day Live for this week. And I appreciate those that are concerned about what we do here in Seattle as far as elections are concerned and how we vote and all kinds of stuff like that. There's a lot of important things. This is All Day Live. I'm Will P. Wilson. Thanks again for watching. And we are streaming online in archive.org and at seattlecommunitymedia.com. You can go to either one. Our shows are programmed streaming even during the week on regular schedules on cable TV here in Seattle, Channel 77 and 23 in King County. We're going to have an interview with this incredible young lady. She's got a very dynamic platform. She's looking at some very serious issues and seems to be addressing it very, very nobly. We're honored to have Don Darrington today with this interview. And Kishama Savant is a very big contender for position two here at the Seattle City Council elections coming up this next month. Again, I hope we all have some interest in listening to her. She's very, very interesting and inspiring, so I'm looking forward to this program. And this is her contact information below. And this is All Day Live, and this is Don Darrington. Choice Wellness, 8600 Aurora. You can even go into Choice Wellness and get longevity spinach. Helps cure cancer and diabetes. It's more than just cannabis, people. It's time to wake up on that. I hope you enjoy this interview. And please get back to me, and that's Judge David Lynn Miller, but we're not worried about that right now. He will be on next week. Hope to hear from you as well. Get back to me, willpiewilson@gmail.com. Thank you very much, and enjoy the program.
People are looking, really urgently looking for alternatives that really represent their interests and their problems that are never being addressed, and people are tired of corporate politics as usual. And that's the same reason that we ran, you know, we started this campaign for city council. We are noticing that Seattle is becoming more and more unaffordable for working people. You can see low-wage jobs proliferating in the labor market. Many of the young people especially have, you know, the only jobs they can get are low-wage jobs. We have skyrocketing rent, you know, a real crisis in affordable, you know, housing. And we can see that for the most part, you know, other than a few exceptions, for the most part, the city government does not really take these considerations, they take these, you know, take these problems into consideration. And we're running to highlight these problems that people are facing and to present solutions to them. And so in an election year that is filled with corporate candidates as usual, I'm the only grassroots candidate that's running for city council. We don't take any money from big business, and we are the only campaign that is fighting for $15 an hour minimum wage citywide. We're also calling for a tax on millionaires and rent control.
I wanted to ask you about the $15 minimum wage. A lot of people think that if somebody gets $15 an hour, that means that part of their pie is going to be missing or taken away. Can you explain how it really works? How raising the minimum wage affects everybody?
So just in general, if you look at, you know, the kind of jobs that people can find, even college, you know, people with college education, many of those jobs now in the post-recessionary period are low-wage jobs, meaning, you know, imagine, you know, a young person straight out of college and they have like $20,000 of student debt. And if the only job they can find is something that pays them maybe, you know, the state minimum wage, $0.19 or $10 an hour, then how are they actually going to make ends meet? How are they going to be able to pay for housing, which is getting more and more expensive in Seattle? How are they going to pay their student debt and so on? And that, you know, that's not even talking about all the people in Seattle who are, you know, who have been stuck in low-wage jobs for years, in some cases even decades. And if you look at the people who have low-wage jobs, they are, you know, a bulk of them are women, they're people of color, and a lot of the neighborhoods in the South are, you know, badly affected by this. And so if you look at the way minimum wage has worked all throughout the country, you know, even the federal minimum wage, but also the cities that have had instituted their own minimum wage, having a higher minimum wage allows people to be able to, working people, to be able to actually pay for their basic needs and have a little bit left over for other sorts of consumption. And, you know, we need to mention here, of course, that we are living in a capitalist system, a system where in order to actually make the economy function and for the growth rates to sustain themselves or increase, you need consumption by a large group of people. And people cannot consume unless they have decent wages. But in terms of your question about, you know, does that actually affect other people adversely? I mean, a common question that's asked is, wouldn't that hurt small businesses? Wouldn't small businesses, you know, go insolvent if they had to pay their workers $15 an hour? Now, the reality is that if you look at nationwide surveys, a large majority of small businesses already pay their workers higher than the federal minimum wage. And that shows you that a lot of people who own small businesses are just, you know, regular people who want to do the right thing by their employees. But the reality is that with low wages, it's both small businesses and working people who lose out. And the only people who gain are corporate executives, the big investors, you know, these are billionaires that we're talking about, people who own big corporations, and, you know, you were talking earlier about the Waltons and so on. And it's really big business investors and CEOs and corporate executives that gain from having a really low wage. So if we have a higher wage, it actually benefits both small businesses and working people.
Recently, we had it on our ballot to vote for a state income tax, and that was actually championed by Bill Gates' father. It failed because of all the, there's always this hysteria, "Oh, if they go after them first, then they're going to come after us next week." But I find it unconscionable that millionaires are not contributing more towards our society. In fact, many of them, nothing. Can you speak to that? I know you mentioned something about a tax on millionaires.
Yes.
How would that play out?
So first of all, I think we should mention, you know, in the context where, you know, we are right here in Seattle. Seattle is in Washington State, and Washington State has the dubious distinction of having the most regressive tax system in the entire nation. That is unconscionable, as you said, Don. And so if you look at the amounts of, or the percentage of taxes that the very wealthy pay, and if you look at the business taxes that the biggest corporations pay, especially the, you know, venture capitalists and the financial investors, it is a fraction of what working people and small businesses pay. So it's absolutely an urgent necessity to bring about some sort of progressive taxation. And we need to do that at the state level as well. And we were, you know, we had a program for that when we were running for state house last year. But at the city level, we can institute a tax on millionaires, which would be, you know, proposed as a privileged tax, because, you know, there's a 100-year-old state law that says that you cannot have an income tax. But first of all, I would say that, you know, that 100-year law needs to be challenged. It's high time.
Yes.
People are suffering, and people are, working people are suffering at the, you know, or rather, the wealthiest people and the billionaires are gaining at the expense of the vast majority of working people. And we need to right that wrong immediately. And it can be done by passing a citywide privilege tax. And so, you know, the framing is that in a city of low-wage workers, if somebody is making more than $1 million a year, that's a privilege, and you need to pay for that. And notice that I'm not using the word earning $1 million, because, you know, earning means that you actually worked for it. But the reality is that although they of course worked for it, the disparity that you see in income is not explained by somebody working harder than another person. I mean, who works harder than many of these fast-food workers who are making so little? So it's not really about how much you work, but it's about whether you happen to be fortunate enough to own stock options or, you know, other returns on capital. Those are also incomes, you know, returns on capital investment. That's something that most working people don't get. Most people only have a paycheck, and that's it. And so we can have a tax on millionaires in order to have Seattle as the, you know, Seattle as the beacon for the rest of the state with a progressive tax.
That sounds really great to me. I think most people who are very involved in working and trying to survive are probably don't have the luxury of doing a lot of research and finding out things that sometimes we can find out otherwise. One of the things I know that really got my head turned around was when I found out that the Johnsons of Johnson &amp; Johnson, a family company, they have trust funds for children who have not yet been conceived. That's what's going on behind the scenes. And us working stiffs, we don't see that. We don't know that's what's going on, that the deck is so stacked against us before we ever even get out of school, before we ever get into school. It's this kind of tax manipulation that the corporations and the extremely wealthy have done to protect their genealogy, but we're the ones doing the work.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because actually, when they want to talk about, a certain political party wants to talk about the job creators, those people are not the job creators. We are the job creators. We're the ones out there doing the jobs, making the jobs, making the products, making the money. But we don't get to keep it.
Absolutely. In fact, that is the origin of this almost unimaginable consolidation of wealth that we see among a very tiny elite and while the rest of us are being impoverished. That is not a coincidence. Poverty is a direct consequence of wealth being consolidated by a small elite. And we need to, you know, we need a city government that will actually recognize that that needs to be changed. And, you know, you mentioned 1098, and that was an interesting example. I want to use that example to point out what's happening on city council right now, which is that when 1098 was first proposed, it had majority support, over 65% were supporting it, and this was on the entire state, you know. And if you look at the support that 1098 had in Seattle and King County, that was even higher. And nationally, if you look at opinion polls on what people think should be done, a tax on very wealthy people is a very, very popular idea. What's happened here is that the city government, and actually the state government as well, is well to the right of what people are. You know, people, the majority of the people in Seattle are well to the left of the city council, but that opinion is not being reflected, those values are not being reflected on the city council. And on a good day, you might have, working people might have one or two voices that are advocating for them in city hall, and for the most part, the city council is, you know, is completely out of touch with the needs and urgent needs of ordinary working people. And our opponent, Richard Conlon, is really an excellent example of that out-of-touch corporate politics. He was the only council member who voted against paid sick days for Seattle's workers. And behind a veneer of pseudo-environmentalism, he was the guy who pushed for the environmentally destructive tunnel mega project. And if you look at the development in the South Lake Union rezoning, he was the frontman for Paul Allen's, you know, Vulcan Real Estate Group and Amazon.com to create housing for, you know, market-rate housing for very, you know, for, you know, upper-income people and really stood against all the efforts to create affordable housing. And we need that to happen. That's why we're, you know, one of the measures we're calling for is rent control.
Yes, that's a topic that actually gets me very excited because we've, we're seeing right now apartments, which just skyrocket in Seattle and the surrounding areas. And of course, the surrounding areas are going to reflect what's happening in the city. And so the rent control is, one of the things that I'm amazed with, how is it possible that as a socialist, that you come out and you fared so incredibly well in the primaries? I mean, you've got it down to two, and I don't think somebody, you know, coming from the socialist movement has ever failed so well before. Is it?
It is actually historic already.
It is historic.
Yes, yes. We, you know, we got 35% of the vote in the primary. That itself is historic for, you know, an open socialist to be, to get that, you know, that significantly higher vote. And also, you know, especially considering the fact that we have a fraction of the budget that the big business candidates have, you know. Richard Conlon is probably going to raise, you know, close to half a million dollars. We, you know, we have raised a fraction of that. But what's happening here is that the reason our campaign has been so successful thus far is that people are hungry for this, you know, change, this shift in political dialogue, because people are tired of politician after politician, year after year, you know, paying lip service to the things that they need, you know, things that working people need. You know, every election year, you'll see these politicians come out of the woodwork and try to talk to people and, you know, have town halls.
That's why I'm mystified. I understand that a city council member gets $120,000 a year. Somebody making $10 an hour gets $400 a week, which is about $1,600, $1,700 a month. So somebody getting $10,000 a month versus, but begrudging somebody getting $1,700 a month, that makes my head spin a little bit.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because where's any kind of social justice or reasonableness at all?
No, no. Exactly. And in fact, you pointed out the exact irony where city officials who are making $120,000 a year are not fighting for $15 an hour, and the only candidate fighting for it. And that's an interesting thing to point out because Seattle city council members are the second highest-paid city council members in the entire nation, second only to Los Angeles.
Wow.
So the question that Seattle's voters need to ask themselves is, is your council doing the second-best job in the country? And if not, then you have some, you know, we have some thinking to do, and we need to elect grassroots candidates, and we need for grassroots candidates to run in the first place. And that's why, you know, we are running not only to win this seat, but also so that we can provide an inspiration for other people from the grassroots to run, because this can be done. Look at the echo that our campaign has got. It means that there is a hunger out there for an alternate kind of voice. And the reason we've done so well despite the socialist label is because the socialist label is no longer a barrier. If you look at opinion polls nationally, especially among young people, you know, people age 18 to 30, they're actually more in favor of socialism than capitalism. And the reason is clear. I mean, they're thinking rationally. They're looking out into the future in a recessionary economy, and they can see that they're actually going to have a worse standard of living than their parents did. I mean, this is something that economists are calling the lost generation. And so they're rationally thinking, okay, capitalism is not working for me. I should look at other ideas. So that's not a barrier for us. What is a barrier is the fact that people have been so demoralized and people feel disenfranchised. You know, look at the low voting rates, you know, why don't everybody who's a registered voter go out and vote? And especially low-income people, people of color, you know, the black community, the Latino community, they don't go out and vote as often because they don't see anybody fighting for them. And that's the difference with our campaign. We are actually fighting for them. And I've also pledged that if I'm elected as a city council member, I will take only the average worker's salary, not $120,000, and I will donate the rest to building social justice movements.
I knew there was a reason why I love you. Could you speak briefly? When I think of socialism, the term, and it's been gotten a lot of bad press from the Reagan era and that sort of thing, but when I think of socialist countries, socialist programs, I think of Norway, I think of Finland, I think of Sweden, I think of places where they have health care, not health insurance, health care. I think of where they have education. I think of where they, you know, where they value, money is valued less than personal relationships. Could you speak to socialism and how this is defined right now in 2010?
Right. So our idea of socialism, you know, which I would clarify, is what we call democratic socialism, meaning it's an economy that actually works for everybody. But the only way that can happen, I mean, if you talk about, you know, what is an economy that works for everybody, then that has to be an economy that is free of poverty, of want. And as you said, we don't want health insurance, but we want health care, genuine health care that will allow people to be healthy. We need everybody to have nutritious, safe food, safe environments, clean air, good-quality housing, good-quality education, walkable neighborhoods, libraries, parks, access to the best standard of living. All that is totally possible. We can provide, you know, the human race at this point is technologically and resource-wise completely capable of providing that standard of living for everybody who lives on the planet today. However, what's, the problem is that the way resource ownership is organized under capitalism, a very tiny global elite owns all the, you know, all the, you know, corporations, all the oil and all the other resources. And the goal of the capitalist system is to maximize profits for those owners of, you know, all those resources. And so regardless of how hard you and I and other working people are working, we will never be able to achieve the standard of living that they have. And so you see this massive, you know, inequality. And if we are to address that inequality, which is the first step, then we need for working people and the community to own communities, to democratically own all of this together. That's what, you know, we would mean by a socialist organization of the economy. And I wanted to quickly also address that, yes, you're completely right, that many of the Scandinavian countries and other European countries have historically, you know, in the last 50 or 60 years, been able to provide much higher quality and much more accessible human services like education, health care, housing, and so on. But the problem is that they, you know, what's happening right now is that they are, they're not socialist countries, they're social democracies, meaning they're capitalist countries, but they have a much better social programs because workers in the past fought for them, the labor movement of the past fought for them. But now many of those programs are under assault because under the name of the recession, a lot of these programs are being cut. So if we really want to, you know, that's, we want to defend those existing programs and make them available to more people in the world, then we need to go more and more of a, we need to have a more and more fundamental shift away from the current economy.
One of the things that concerns me and that I have a kind of passion about, having had a store in the university district and seen so many homeless children, it just hurts my heart, homeless families too, but the children, that most of which have left home because they've been abused, they've been kicked out, maybe they're gay, maybe they're this, they're that. How can we help, how can, how can we, as being a member of the city council, how will you be able to help us, help them?
I'm really glad you asked about this, Don, because that's an absolutely gut-wrenching thing to think about, you know, homeless people in general and the miseries that you go through if you're homeless, but especially homeless youth. And you mentioned, you know, especially LGBT youth. If you look at the poverty rates, suicide rates, depression rates, rates of homelessness among LGBT youth, especially trans youth, it is, you know, far higher than, you know, for youth in general. And like you said correctly, they become homeless because they are trying to escape abusive domestic situations. So while I will say that homelessness is a far bigger problem that cannot be addressed just in one, you know, one policy or another, you know, we need very systematic and fundamental solutions to that, and that has a lot to do with everything we were talking about earlier about inequality.
Economic justice.
And economic justice, that's all true. But there are things that the city government could do today. We need the city government to fight for full funding of social programs so that these kids get immediate help in terms of shelter, counseling, you know, helping them to assimilate into society.
So they're not further victimized.
They're not further victimized.
Yeah.
And this can be done. And the reason it's not being done in the way it should be, I mean, some services are of course in existence, but the reason it's not being done in a thorough and comprehensive way that it should be done is because there's, you know, most of the city government is not fighting for these interests. You know, they're busy trying to give big corporations yet another tax loophole, they're busy trying to give away, you know, city-owned land to yet another billionaire real estate investor. And we need an advocate for these sorts of things, and that's why we're running this campaign, and we encourage other people to run for city government as well. The other thing we should, we need to do very quickly is make sure that tent communities, you know, tent communities for homeless people are regulated by the city and allowed to exist because they provide a really necessary stopgap measure for people who are homeless today. And that's, and it's an inhuman thing not to support that. We have to, you know, be able to support that and also provide funds for that.
Absolutely. If viewers want to support your campaign, and I certainly hope that everybody watching does, how can they contact you and what can they do to help you?
It would be great if they could get in touch with us. There are many ways of getting in touch with our campaign, and I'll, you know, list them in a second. But I wanted to say very quickly to your viewers that, you know, we are genuinely grassroots campaign. If we are able to win this election, we will indeed be making history. It hasn't been, you know, it hasn't happened for decades that a campaign like ours has succeeded, and it shows that times are changing. it shows that times are changing. And I invite everybody who is listening, even if they're not in Seattle, to help us out and be part of that making of history. And one way you can find out more about us is by going to our website, which appears on your screen, you know, www.votesawant.org. Or you can call us at the number that appears on your screen, and we will get back to you. We are also on Facebook, you can just search Vote Savant. And I invite you all to become members of this campaign. In fact, I will leave you with this, that we are such a grassroots campaign that we now have over 150 volunteers working on this campaign. I would like to ask, when was the last time a big business candidate was able to inspire that kind of, you know, response? And, you know, people are flocking to this campaign, because they're taking ownership of this as their own effort. And that's what we want. We need a collective effort.
Because it is our campaign.
It is our campaign. It's our collective campaign, yes.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Don. I really appreciate it.
So, hi, I'm Rami Khalil from Socialist Alternative. And I'll be introducing the speakers at this press conference today. Our two speakers are the candidate, Chama Sawant, and also longtime local activist and media figure, Jav Parish. And after the two speakers, we can take any questions or interviews from the media. So, just to introduce our first speaker, Chama Sawant. She is an Occupy-inspired Socialist Alternative candidate who received nearly 30% of the vote last year, running against the Washington State Speaker of the House, Frank Chopp. And her campaign last year was the first time she ever ran for office, and she received the highest vote for a socialist in Seattle in decades. It was also the highest vote for any independent left-wing candidate in the entire country last year. It was also the strongest challenge that the Washington State Speaker of the House, Frank Chopp, had ever received in his entire term in office. She was also endorsed by The Strange Newspaper, Communication Workers of America, Local 37083, also Amalgamated Transit Union, Local 587 during the primary election, and Pastor Rich Lang of the University Temple United Methodist Church, among many others. So, without further ado, I will hand it over to Chama Sawant.
Thank you, Rami. And I want to start by thanking everyone for being here, all our supporters.
Welcome to All Day Live. And as I turn this off, we're going to have a chance to hear a very important person here in Seattle. This is All Day Live. And Chama Sawant. And we're really honored to see you today. And what is it that we just heard from about you at the city council meeting, was that it, just now?
I think that was the press conference that we held when we announced our candidacy for Seattle City Council.
Okay. Interesting. Very interesting. So, you're running for Seattle City Council, right?
Right.
And what we're looking at is a circumstance where people are out of touch, people that are in the city council right now, right?
Most of them, yeah.
Yeah. And so, they're not really paying attention to the things that are happening around the planet, right? I mean, am I wrong?
Well, they are paying attention, but what's missing is, you know, are they, do they feel a sense of urgency to solve the problems that the people of Seattle are facing?
Yeah.
One of the things, Will, I would like to mention if I may, as some of the bona fides, if you will, of Chama, she's a professor of economics at Seattle City College, which is really important, because she has a grasp of economics and social justice that most of us aren't even exposed to. So, I think that's really important, to come in with that kind of knowledge and experience. And I really appreciate that. Chama's also a member of the American Federation of Teachers, and she belongs to the Local 1789. And unions are an issue that's real important to me, so that really resonates. My mother was a schoolteacher.
Oh, really?
And she actually was on the bargaining committee. And then those days, back in 1802, when I was young, there actually were caps. For instance, the superintendent could make no more than 20 times the lowest teacher wage. Why would a superintendent need to have more than 20 times? Even that's pretty excessive.
Of course.
But now, that's all gone out the window. Anyway, another thing I wanted to let the viewers know about Chama is that she's a member of Socialist Alternative. And that is a nationwide organization that promotes social and economic justice. That's essentially what that's about. And so, I'm really glad you're able to be with us this evening. I had a few things that I wanted to ask you about. I know one of the things that you've talked about quite a bit is rent control. Isn't that illegal?
Yes. The state law has, you know, state has outlawed rent, outlawed rent control, meaning that if any municipality, like the city of Seattle, were to enact its rent control, then that makes it legally possible for the state to challenge that in court. And I would say that, you know, it's important for us to think about that. But first of all, you know, before we talk about the judicial aspects of it or legal aspects of it, I think we should talk about why we need rent control. I feel like you are already convinced that maybe we need rent control. You were talking about the skyrocketing rent for most working people and their families in Seattle. And you see what's happening for a decade or two, people are being pushed farther and farther outside the city limits. And they live one or two or sometimes even three bus transfers away from their place of work. And combine that with the really abysmal state of public transit in the city, and you have people struggling to somehow get through their day. You know, imagine single moms having to drop their kids off at school, having to, you know, take buses to their place of work somewhere in downtown Seattle, having to pick up groceries, pick up their children. It's an ordeal. And, you know, that's not, not the quality of life that we would want for children to have when they're growing up. And so, if you look at the skyrocketing rent in the city, you know, people will tell you, including economists, will tell you, well, that's just supply and demand. And it's true that, you know, due to supply and demand, there is a little bit of fluctuation of the prices. But the reality is that, if you look at how much rent is increasing in how little time, you know, a lot of people are getting notices from their landlords, saying, well, your rent is going up 50%, 75%, 100% in a period of six months. That's not supply and demand. That's not an act of God. That's happening because a lot of large real estate investors, financial investors, are buying up a lot of the rental units in the city. And they're artificially, you know, exponentially increasing the rent so that they can, you know, rent them to somebody who's making a six-figure salary, say.
So, it would make-
But the majority of people don't.
It would make one wonder, then, why the state has a vested interest in supporting the rich landlords instead of the citizens of the state?
I think that, I think that points to the problem in, you know, electoral politics in the United States in general. It's not, it's not unique to Seattle or Washington State. The reality is that, for the most part, despite there being well-meaning people within the Democratic Party, especially the people who support the Democratic Party are very well-meaning. But the, but the fact is that, for the most part, the Democratic Parties and the Republican Parties' agenda are controlled by the wealthy and by big business. And so, even though there are differences between the Republicans and Democrats, for the most part, government as it exists does not work for ordinary working people. And that is why you see laws like rent control, which you are completely right to point out, that that doesn't even make sense. You know, we need rent control. And what rent control would do is it would limit the increases in rents to somewhere around the cost of living, overall cost of living. So, it would, you know, it might make your rent go up by a slight amount, but it wouldn't have you, you know, it wouldn't require you to move out of the city, because you can't afford the 50% increase in rent. That's what rent control is supposed to protect, you know, prevent, because it's supposed to prevent price gouging because of speculative investment. Now, as far as whether it can be done, yes, it can be done. The city has the right to pass it. The state, especially the right-wing, could take the city to court. That's, that, you know, and, and real estate investment firms will want to do that. However, the point is, do we have a leadership in the city government that is willing to fight for this? Look at how we had to get marijuana laws, the marriage equality laws. For both of those different states had to defy federal law in order to achieve that. And that happened only because there were so many people, you know, you know, if you can look nationwide, millions of people who were actively demanding that. You had movements, you know, out on the street to demand marriage equality. If you remember, you know, the National Equality March, and we had the Solidarity March in Seattle. It's that kind of activism that is able to put so much pressure on the government that makes that kind of social change happen. So, if we want to do rent control, that is how we would do it. I mean, we need a voice in the city council to advocate for it. But at the same time, we need movements out on the street demanding that, so that that pressure is felt by the government in order to, you know, actually uphold it. And my opponent, Conlon, you know, often says that, well, we can't do rent control, because it's outlawed by the state. But, and, you know, and then the city would be taken to court. But I would like to point out that, in fact, he was the person, you know, he was pushing for the tunnel to happen, even though, for the longest time, majority of people of Seattle were against it, because it's environmentally destructive, and it had no, you know, it had no accommodation for transit, which is what we need. And he sued the people of Seattle from carrying out a referendum. And the judge ruled that he was completely out of bounds in doing that and in using his city website to argue against the public's right to referendum. And that's a really good example of how we have people in the city government who are willing to go to court to uphold the interests of big business, but not willing to go to court to uphold the interests of working people.
Of working people.
And that is the crux of the point, that, you know, we need, we need a change of leadership.
One of the things that concerns me, being a woman, is the gender gap pay, pay gap. I remember years ago, when, actually, I went to Washington DC for the Equal Rights Amendment. And at that time, we had buttons. It was either 67 or 69, I can't remember what. But that represented how many pennies to the dollar we made compared to men. We haven't made that much gain in the last 35 years, which is quite a long time, actually. A couple of generations. And we've made, what, 5%, 10% gain. Still, women are vastly underpaid for equal jobs, especially when we get into, as you were talking about, the suburbs and the areas outside of Seattle that are so affected by what happens in Seattle. Can you speak to that? What can, as a city council, how can the city council make things better for women?
Right. I think that's a very important question. I'm really asked, I'm really glad you asked that. And so, as you said, the gender pay, first of all, in no, even today, with all the technological achievements and all the wealth that has been generated under capitalism, there is no country in the world that has equal pay for equal work for women. Everywhere, there is a gender pay gap. And that's, that itself, you know, is an unfortunate situation that we need to address. And in Seattle, within the Seattle city limits, the gender pay gap is lower than the national average. I think it's around 80 cents to a dollar. But if you spread out into the metropolitan area, you know, the suburbs, as you said, where, because of the increasing cost of housing, more and more low-income people have been pushed out into the, you know, outskirts of the city. And so, if you look at the gender pay gap overall in the metropolitan area, it's pretty, it's pretty astounding. Actually, it's lower than the national average, which is quite shameful. And so, a lot of the policies that we would like to enact if we were in city government, you know, the $15 an hour tax on millionaires and rent control, all of these policies will actually primarily benefit women and people of color and the LGBT community. These are the communities that are the most oppressed, and they are the poorest, and they, they need these things the most. And so, everything that we're talking about relates directly to the needs of working women. And I'll give you one quick example. If you look at childcare workers, they are some of the hardest-working and talented people who are the lowest-paid, and they mostly tend to be women, and, you know, women of color, so.
Chama, we're at the end of this event, and we're going to cover some organs. And it is an event. Thank you. Pleasant to have you here. You're going to hear more from me right away.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Well, we're going to get to be supporting her in the city council, which brings me to one kind of last question. It's not enough just to vote. What else can people do? And I also would like to encourage all of you who are watching who do not live in the city of Seattle, send your money. Come knock on doors, come put out flyers. Work for this woman, because what she does in Seattle is going to help make the improvement in quality of life in the, in the regional area, the whole region. So, what can we do besides vote?
So, besides voting, I mean, yeah, as you said, first of all, we need financial contributions from working people like ourselves, you know, young people, the elderly, everybody who thinks this is a good idea, who are inspired by this campaign. We need that to happen, because we don't take any money from big corporations, and we need money to run the campaign. And so, all financial contributions will be greatly appreciated. No financial contribution is ever too small. So, please, you know, make that donation, and we will put your money to good use. And in terms of, you know, what else is necessary, if we really want to make these things possible, you know, if we want to get $15 an hour in this city, if we want rent control in this city, then we have to have not only a voice to advocate for that in city hall, you know, which is a, you know, huge step forward. If I'm elected to city council, that I, I, you know, that my, my job will be to advocate for those policies. But that's not going to be enough. We need people out on the streets demanding those same things. And I, and just a very quick example I'll give you is how I will be different than most of the people in, you know, in politics, is that, as, you know, somebody was telling me this joke, where they said that the number of public engagements candidates do when they're, you know, running for office that year, it shoots up. And then the rest, the next four years, they don't, you know, it shoots down. And so, we will do exactly the opposite. In fact, the number of town halls we will hold will go up once we are in city council, because the real power for social change lies not in the person who holds the elected office. The real power lies in people who live in that area, the community, the workers, working people, and the low-income people. Everybody who has an interest in bringing about this change needs to get involved. And I hope this campaign serves as a tool to make that happen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys, I appreciate everything. I appreciate it greatly. I heard that you were here today. And we'll have you on, yeah. Is that good? I appreciate it so much. And then get all your, and Vote Savant, right?
Right.
Absolutely.
Am I wrong? That's it, sons. You better. Thank you very much, you guys. We'll see you next week. Thank you very much.
But the question that we have to ask is, where is this leadership that is going to fight against that voice? Where is the voice in the city government and in the state government that will advocate for the interests of the rest of us, the rest of us, 99%? And if you have a revenue crisis, then why don't we have people there fighting to tax the wealthy?
Yeah!
Why aren't we taxing the rich? Why aren't we taxing corporations? Why is it that when they're saying that there's no money to fund a basic service, like a bus, you know, a mass transit service, there's more than enough money to give corporate subsidies, corporate taxes are at historic lows, and then, you know, more and more land in the city is being given away to billionaire developers like Paul Allen? And we're told that, oh, there's no money for basic health, there's no money for bus service, there's no money to have a low-income fare, there's no money to have a right-free zone, there's no money to fund homeless shelters, there's no money to fix the potholes, there's no money for education, there's no money for childcare, there's no money for early childhood education. This is the whole gamut of social infrastructure that is under attack, because we don't have a leadership that is actually going to advocate for the rest of us. And I think we should be thinking about that. And I know that many politicians have come and spoken here before me, but let's be honest, they are part of the problem.
Yeah!
They have been part of the leadership!
Yeah!
Why is it that you hear them talking about this and addressing these rallies only in an election year? You know, that has something to do with it. Why is it that the rest of the four years, they're never out here talking to us and fighting for us, but out there hobnobbing with big business and real estate developers? That's the question we need to ask. And what we need is our own leadership. We need our own grassroots leadership. And I wanted to give you an example of how we can do that. Our campaign for city council is a grassroots campaign. We don't take any corporate donations. We are activists fighting for working people like the rest of us. We're fighting for the unemployed. We're fighting for students who are struggling with student debt and low-wage labor. We're fighting for women who are struggling to put food on the table and yet care for their children and fulfill their obligations with two jobs. And so, if you can, look at, if, look at this city. I mean, yes, in Olympia, they'll tell you that, you know, it's the big bad Republicans. But what about Seattle? But what about Seattle? Why aren't politicians fighting at the city level for these things? What is stopping the city government from saying that we will create a tax on millionaires to supplement the funding for Metro at the city level? There is no law that stops them from doing that. And that is what we are talking about. I don't know if you're aware, but King County as a whole, you know, which Seattle is part of, includes more than 68,000 millionaires we have sitting right here. What is stopping them from taxing them? And if you do the math, even a very modest tax rate on their ultra-high incomes will create more than enough funding to fulfill not only the 17% cuts that we, that are staring at us, but also to create funding for expanding mass transit, which is what we should be talking about. And to fund education and to fund public housing. I mean, look at the, look at the levels at which we are being attacked. With funding for expanding mass transit, which is what we should be talking about. And to fund education and to fund public housing. I mean, look at the, look at the levels at which we are being attacked. Not only are we being told, you know, forget expanding mass transit, they're talking about cutting the existing transit, they're cutting existing funding for the transit, but on top of that, look at the cost of housing. How many of you think your rent is too high? So we have a system in this city where people are being pushed out of the city center because they can't afford the rents anymore. They're being pushed into two or three bus transfers away from their place of work or the schools where they will drop off their children every day. And on top of that, the cost of healthcare and so on. So I think the theme of this discussion should not simply be, how can we save the existing Metro? How can we fight the 17% cut? No. We should reject that kind of defensive fight. It's time to go on the offensive. And fight for our rights. You know, this city is completely capable, given its wealth and its productivity and its technological advancement, to fund all our rights. What's missing is our own leadership. So we need to be out there, not defending what we have, but demanding full funding for Metro, full funding for education, full funding for all the social services that we need. And that is why our campaign is also fighting for a citywide $15 an hour minimum wage. And I agree with Berita. I agree with Berita. Enough with the Band-Aid, car tab solutions. No more Band-Aid solutions. Let's have systemic solutions to these problems. And I, and I invite you all to fight with us. This campaign is not about me. This campaign is about all of us together, fighting for our rights. So please join us and be, let's be in solidarity.
I wanted the press to know that most of the people you see here are people who volunteered in a very dedicated manner to our campaign last year. I also want to thank members of the press for making time to be here. We really appreciate it. And as Rami said, you know, we are running this campaign in the background of our historic victory last year. And I know that in the mainstream media, a victory in an election campaign is always measured by whether you actually get to occupy the seat. But I will tell you, as an activist, that we measure our success by how much we were able to shift the debate in, in the mainstream media, in what is actually talked about. If you compare the debate that Obama and Romney had, this sham, ridiculous pretense of a debate, to what we actually did here in, in the city of Seattle, in the 43rd District, that was, in, in fact, the only real debate that ordinary working people could see, where their interests were put on the table, where things that affect them were talked about, where the question of taxing the billionaires and the capitalist class was talked about. And what we did was we shifted the conversation from this, these canned statements that these corporate politicians make to a real activist dialogue. And we represented ordinary working people, students, people of color, women, the elderly, the disabled, and so on. And we will be doing that again. We will be shifting the political debate in the city to the left and using every inch of our, of space that we get to support social movements and mass movements. This year, we will be running against Richard Conlon, who's a 16-year incumbent to the city council. And he is one among a long line of city council members who have basically furthered the agenda of big business and corporations and the super wealthy. He is particularly known for being the only council member who voted against the Patesek Leave Initiative, which was an absolutely necessary thing and which was supported hugely by rank-and-file workers. He also shifted, you know, he also sort of got the monorail out of the popular agenda. You know, there was a popular support for that. And more than anything else, I think we should mention that this whole city council, you know, is populated by members who make nearly or even over $120,000 per year. Now you tell me, how can these people, in any honesty, represent ordinary working people while they're making such huge paychecks? And I pledge, as a candidate to the city council, that if I was elected to the city council member, I will take home no more than the average worker's wage in Seattle. And the rest, we will collectively put into building mass movements. All the rest of the money will be used to build mass movements. Tell me, when was the last time you heard this from somebody running for city council? But it, it should also be pointed out that Conlon is not an exception to the rule. He is the rule. The mayor's office and the city council are both controlled by the Democratic Party establishment. And indeed, the city itself is controlled by the elite of the Democratic Party, who in turn are in the pockets of the Downtown Business Association, the construction industry, and particularly Paul Allen's Balkan, which is devouring real estate in this city while the rest of us are struggling with skyrocketing rents. And these politicians on the city council are practiced in the vile art of speaking somewhat progressive rhetoric while carrying out policies that benefit big business and the billionaires and the millionaires. And our campaign this year is going to be, in this political space, the only advocate for ordinary working people who are routinely shut out of the political dialogue in the city. The rich are getting richer, while the rest of us face skyrocketing rents, we're facing high taxes, while big, big business is paying historically low taxes, and we're facing low wages and an overall rising cost of living. Our campaign will be calling for increasing the city's minimum wage to $15 an hour. And I say, this is long overdue, so high time, let's fight for this together. And we will also be speaking out against the police brutality that happens in this city. And in fact, I need hardly remind those of you here that the SPD has a long, infamous history of brutality and repression.